The areas that we have flooding in our streets and in our areas. And we've been working on them through either going out to bond or grants or however we can afford this. Now, the bigger problem is that when the infrastructure was built back in the day, the piping was not that large. So we're doing our best to still accommodate other than ripping up the streets and then ripping up pipes, et cetera. So there's a lot of things that we're trying to do to ease it, the draining, and also be able to not redoing all the pipeline. One of the most important things that we're doing is these duck fittings along the Atlantic Avenue area. They look like little duck bills. When the water rises and gets active, they close down so the water does not go back in the pipe and up into the street. And that's what happens during sanding. That was the end of my sentence.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Anastasio.
Yeah, it's a pretty much regular thing in the city. And I mean, growing up here, I know that there's places like Julyne and Edwards that always floods under certain conditions. And then there's Long Branch Avenue. That's a horrendous situation repeatedly. And I mean, the best thing you could do is look for alternative solutions because any solution that they've come up with so far has been a total failure. I mean, you do have to explore options. And I think that that would be the main issue that you would want to address concerning that.
Thank you.
When I first came on council, that was one of my large concerns because I've seen flooding in the area, in different various areas of the town. So we have actually initiated our first ever comprehensive plan to analyze these problems and investigate them in our antiquated stormwater systems, very old. We have already improved over one-third of the drainage problems. Now, we continue to work with that. We every year fund our capital budget to take another portion because it would be millions of dollars to do the whole thing at once. But we have finally have this plan in place where we are conquering it year after year. So it's going to take a little while, but we're getting there. I'm proud to say that. So, and that's all. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Billings?
Not to repeat everyone else's, but we do have the drainage plan in place. Also, another way that we are getting some of these drainage problems corrected is through the use of developers' contribution to the city. There's a project up on Cooper Avenue that has been approved. And part of their project is they will be working on Long Branch Avenue to mitigate the flooding problem there. They have told us they will spend close to $400,000 to mitigate that problem, which is one of the worst problems is Long Branch Avenue. So some of the developers do do a public contribution that help us make the city better. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mickelley?
So when it comes to the issue of drainage, which has been a perennial problem in Long Branch, I think for as long as anyone can remember, what we have to acknowledge is that obviously the existing system can't be completely removed. That's not economically feasible. But we have to respect the confines of what we're working with, which means not overdeveloping land anymore than it has been. Wetlands shouldn't be... We have a problem with putting high-density housing in places where it shouldn't be. It seems as though every parcel of land that's open will soon have condominiums on it. And the problem is when you develop certain areas, the water... Okay, so if you reroute the drainage problems from there, they're just going to go somewhere else. You have to respect the system that's in place and realize that there is a limit to what the city can accommodate.
Mr. Ponzi?
As Mr. Anastasio indicated, him growing up in the city, he's pointed out there's drainage, there's been drainage issues from the start. This is, Long Branch is an old beach city. You get these problems. Long Branch is not alone. You can ask yourself, how many beach towns across the Jersey Shore do you know this happens? I'm a professional engineer. Drainage is one of my specialties. You can do things to mitigate. You cannot do things to completely solve the issue as this is an old town and the system was not built for the thought of the future. One of the things you can do as a city is to, when developments come in, to enforce that the developer fix or mitigate issues in his area or in their area where they're building. And one thing I'd like to point out is, one thing is, when it comes to beach towns, development along the oceanfront doesn't really affect your flooding in the street because it's all tidal. It's the ocean. The ocean's what dictates it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to do two more questions and then we're going to go to opening closing statements. You've been a great audience. And we have the room here, I believe, till 9:30. So we're going to close the questions at about nine. And then you can ask, you know, visit with the candidates, stay around. You can ask them your personal issues. This question, I'm going to mix it up a little bit. I'm going to ask it, and anyone who wants to answer it, feel free because I don't know if everybody will have knowledge about this. What is the current policy regarding Airbnb rentals? Does the city encourage Airbnb temporary rentals? And if not, why not? And show a hand if you want to answer this. We'd be happy to have a response. Mr. Ponzi?
I'm not currently on the council, but I've been attending council meetings for the better part of the past eight months, maybe even longer. And I did hear this discussed at one of the council meetings. And I believe the mayor said it's currently not legal in Long Branch.
Okay.
Airbnb rentals.
The thing is, there is an ordinance in which each residence can have two certificate of occupancies. And when you have a B and B, Airbnb, you're changing your occupancy continuous. The thing is, is that a lot of these Airbnbs are being done secretive. They're advertising, yes, but if they're actually taking the unit or staying at the house, that's where the problem is. So it's one of those things that it does happen, it can happen. Monitoring it and policing it is the issue.
Okay. Anybody else want to comment? Ms. Billings?
I'd like to say they are illegal in the city of Long Branch. Unfortunately, people, and if you look at the Airbnb ads, they're very secretive about where they are. They don't want you to know. But if you do know a place that is running a B and B, contact code enforcement. And they will go over and give them the summons because they are not legal. As Michael said, two COs, that's all you're allowed to have. So they are not allowed in the city. Thank you.
It was Mike?
Can you hold that to your closing if you have something else to add? Okay? Just because I have one more question and then we'll do closing statements. And this, putting these two together, they're about perks for residents, actually. The first half is can we allow free access to the beaches for Long Branch residences? And how about giving Long Branch taxpayers a parking pass, ideally for free, but even at a reduced rate and that would encourage city residents to visit Pure Village? So it's about getting free or lower-priced parking passes and free access to beaches. And we will start with Mr. Do... Where we go? Mr. Siriani?
Perks for residents. Then you have a situation where you're trying to figure out who is the resident? Who, are they year-round resident? Are they half-year resident? That becomes a bookkeeping nightmare. The, what we try to do is we keep our beach badges. I've gone on council eight, this is our eighth year. We have not raised our beach passes. In the time that I've been on this council, it's reliable. It's, there has not been any increase. And we are the keepers along the Jersey coast in Long Branch. I think it's one of the harder thing to regulate than it is to just say free beaches and free passes. There was also something that, it was in one of our discussions, that you could be charged with why the residents and not the visitors. There's equality type thing that they would, that you might run into.
Mr. Anastasio?
Free beaches. I guess in a perfect world, you would have a free beach, but I don't think that's going to be accomplished here. As long as I can remember, you always had to kind of have a fee to get on the beach. Is that right? I think at one time, maybe it was this free student path that they had. But I don't believe, other than that, there had ever been a time that you didn't have to pay to at least attend the beach. You know, there's a lot of overhead there. I do do some work sometimes with lifeguard people and, you know, that's a lot of overhead. There's a lot of things and a lot of pieces that have to be accommodated for. This is one time when I do believe that you do have to fund, you know, the beach fronts. There's no way around it as far as like parking and stuff unless you had an alternative way of generating the income. I don't believe that you'd be able to just totally eliminate that immediately either. There's less room and a whole lot more people want to go hang around the ocean like they used to because of the size of the beach itself.
Thank you. Ms. Bestelli?
Okay. Excuse me. For years now, I continue to fight for keeping our beach fees level and not increasing them. I am always concerned for families with lots of children who I want to encourage to attend the beach, not discourage. And I'm proud of the fact that we have the lowest beach fees on the shore. I'd love to offer it for free to everyone, especially to our residents. But I think Avon got in trouble doing, trying to give lower beach rates. And so we know that that's not possible for the residents. But think about it, if we didn't, if we didn't, who would be paying for cleaning the beaches, guarding the beaches? There's so many expenses that are incurred every day. So unfortunately, we do, we do have to charge. And it's been good for us because that charge goes directly into the general fund, which help, and it pays for all of those expenses.
Thank you. Ms. Billings?
Yes, we do give some free beach away. Anyone 62 and over does not have to pay to use the beach. If you're under 14, you don't have to pay to use the beach. If you're a volunteer fireman or first aid, volunteer first aid, you get free beach. So it may not seem that we give free beach, but we do a lot of free beach because a lot of us are over 62. And we also, so we do give away some free beach. We do things to raise money on the beaches that also help. We sell cabanas, beach houses, and lockers to get more money into the city so our revenue comes up. Thank you.
Mr. Mickelley?
I don't foresee any reasonable way where you could assure that only residents had free beach access because then you have to get into the technicalities of, does that apply to everyone who owns property in Long Branch? Does it, is the only people who own, do people who rent, people who live here year-round, people who live here seasonally? Do you have to live here six months and one day to be a resident? It would just, it wouldn't be feasible. As for providing free parking for residents at Pure Village, I think that's also a tricky situation because there are businesses elsewhere in this city who would object, probably rightfully so, to having the city government incentivize people parking at Pure Village when they don't get that benefit elsewhere in the city. I think the main issue is making sure that we have a transit system that can get people effectively to all neighborhoods in the city and the beachfront without having to worry about taking away the parking privileges of certain people or giving residents privileges that other people don't enjoy.
Thank you. Mr. Ponzi?
I know this is a very important issue. For me, it was really surprising when I'm, as I'm campaigning. Many people I've discussed this with, it's the principle of thing. I live in Long Branch. I want to go to the beach. The problem is, it's a financial issue. If I remember correctly, I believe the beach fees alone bring in about $2 million to the city. If we were to supplement the beach fees out of your taxes so every Long Branch resident could go to the beach free, you would have one of two issues. You would have residents that do not go to the beach supporting in their taxes the residents that do, which I don't believe is fair. And how do you control the people, the residents that have beach passes now, from giving them to their friends who don't live in town? Their friends come over to give their beach pass out, to lend it to them? I just don't think it's a, an easy solution to come to without actually having a beach fee. Thank you.
Mr. Santa, last word on the beaches.
I think it would be impossible to monitor. We can't stop, I don't think we'd be able to stop people from giving somebody, their friend, their beach badge. Same goes with parking if that was, it's impossible. I don't, I agree, you know, I would love to go to the beach for free, but it's, it's just not feasible.
Thank you. Before we offer, before you offer your closing statements, after we began this debate, I was informed that, well, let me backtrack. We asked any of the candidates if they could not be here for any reason, they would be allowed to offer a two-minute opening statement that the moderator would read. And I was informed after we began that we did get a two-minute, I don't know if it's two minutes, we'll see. Anna will tell us, a statement from Mr. Pallone. So I'm going to take the opportunity to read that because we did give all the no-shows an opportunity to send something. And then we'll go right to your closing statements. Okay. Anna, time me, let me know if I've gone over. I want to thank you for the invitation to participate in the forum sponsored by the West End Watch Dogs this evening. Unfortunately, the team and I are unable to attend the event because of previous commitments. The team, however, has committed to participating in the Link News League, League of Women Voters Debate on May 1st. I would like to tell you a little about myself, who I am, why I'm running, and what I stand for. I was born in Long Branch, graduated from Long Branch High School, and now my wife and I are raising our son here. There are so many things I like about our city, the diversity of our people and the pride we have for our community. I admire the dedication of my fellow members of the Long Branch and the Elveron First Aid Squad. I'm proud of the fine education my son John is getting at Gregory Elementary School, where I serve as the vice president of the PTA. But most of all, it's the neighborhoods and the community groups that make Long Branch special. There are so many neighborhoods in this city that are not, but they are not getting the attention and resources they deserve. Abandoned properties are a light on our neighborhoods. We need to force the banks and absentee landlords to clean up the problem properties. We need to put Long Branch back to work. For large-scale construction projects, we will require developers to train and hire Long Branch residents. For too long now, new development has been concentrated on just a few square blocks on the waterfront. And it seems that the rest of Long Branch has been forgotten. We need to make sure that the new development helps all of Long Branch, not just Pure Village. Thank you. I've been serving on the Long Branch City Council for the last eight years. People come to me with their ideas and concerns, and I do what I can to help. And some problems have to be solved at the top. As mayor, my council and I will represent all of Long Branch. The diversity of Long Branch is our strength. And the diversity of my team represents everyone. We will listen to people's problems, clean up our streets, I get to, okay, and neighborhoods. And, thank you. Gave a few lines, but he came close. Okay, we've done our due diligence on that. And I will now invite the council candidates to offer a minute for closing statements. You may ask a question.
Okay.
If I could hear you?
No, 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 I guess I'm not on. Hello? Hello? My question...
Thank you. My question is, when we agreed to do this, we were told we would have two minutes for a closing statement. Would it be possible for us to have that since we have less candidates here tonight? And I already prepared my two minutes, so I would appreciate if I could have that.
Well, I just did want to keep people, I know we have the room till 9:30, but you've been here since 7 o'clock. You know, I thought we, I gave more questions because, but if you can cut it, how about one and a half? Let's make a, let's make a deal. Anna, one and a half for closing statements, okay? Keep everybody happy. And we will start at the other side of the table, Mr. Siriani, next.
I enjoy working with the people of Long Branch being your councilmen. I enjoy making a difference in moving back to the community. Long Branch has been very good to my family, especially with our business. My father taught us to offer our services to the community. I have two brothers, one's a monsignor, one's a priest, Sam and Anthony. They took it a little bit more seriously. They became religious life. Joseph, my younger brother, volunteer fireman, former fire chief for the city of Long Branch, member of the Elveron First Aid, and I in city government. I like the vision the mayor has for Long Branch, and I want to see it to completion. Not just the oceanfront, but also the development throughout the city. West End, Transit Village, downtown, and working to keep and improve our services the city offers to the residents. I have learned very fast government moves slow. And some of our projects need our guidance to completion. And I want to be there to see them to the end. I am asking for your vote to vote for Mayor Adam Schneider and the council ticket, Joy Bestelli, Kate Billings, Adam Ponzi, Diana Dos Santos, and me, Michael Siriani. Thank you very much for coming out tonight. I hope you enjoy the evening as much as I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Hold your applause, wait till the end.
Mr. Santos? I want to thank Patty Barachi and the West End Watchdog Group for organizing the debate tonight. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for moderating. I would like to take this opportunity to state that we are all here for the same reason, to better our city and our community. And I would like the opportunity to help in continuing the city's growth. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ponzi?
As a professional engineer and a qualified purchasing agent, my career provides me an in-depth understanding of governmental agreements, contracts, laws, and finances. I believe my professional experience will help me bring new ideas to the city council and to better serve the citizens of Long Branch. As a child of Long Branch, I also have the history of where the city was in the 80s and how it has changed over the years. Long Branch is, and always has been, my city. I love this city. I was born here in 1981, grew up here, played here, bought my parents' house here, and married my beautiful wife Linda here. I am running for city council because I want to help bring Broadway back to life. I want to help bring a pier and ferry service to Long Branch. I want to help continue the progress the city has made by increasing open space, decreasing crime, and making smart financial decisions to maintain our city's services while stabilizing the tax rate. I want to be a part of helping Long Branch grow and prosper. My name is Adam Ponzi, and I want to thank everyone for being here tonight and listening to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mickelley?
I'd like to thank everyone who came out tonight. I'd like to thank Patty Barachi for helping organize this. And I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for moderating. But I would also like to thank everybody who actually is running for the office, who came to this debate because this is not an event for us. We know what we stand for. This is an event for the voters and to acquaint them with what our vision for Long Branch is. I love Long Branch. I love living here. I love the people. I love the history. I love the culture. And I see a future that would be brighter than anything the city has seen in its past. But that's going to require a change in direction, a change in fiscal policy, and a change in the overall environment at City Hall. I've been attending city council meetings for at least four years now. And I'm not happy with what I've seen. And I know a lot of people feel like they don't have a voice there. I would like to be that voice. And I would like to be a voice for the people of Long Branch and all of our communities, not just along the oceanfront. I was hoping to be able to discuss several issues with the Pallone team as well, but I guess I'll have to hold off on that for two weeks. So I look forward to the next debate and I hope to see everyone in this room and everyone who's actually running for these offices attend. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Billings?
Thank you. When I was in the school system, I used to talk about my school family. The teachers, the staff, the students, their parents. I have a city family now. I am very proud of what the city does. I am proud of all of its employees. I am proud of the fire department, the police department, the sanitation department. I love this city. I believe that I am a citizen's advocate, that if a citizen has a concern, I will try to do my best to make it better for them. I have enjoyed this last eight years. And I hopefully, I will get re-elected. And I ask for your vote, not just for me, but for the entire Schneider team so we can move forward with projects that are now so close to coming to fruition that will make the city better. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hello? Okay. There's some accomplishments that haven't been mentioned tonight that I just wanted to take a few moments to share. But I want to assure my people here and those that are listening that careful spending is an important issue to me. And especially think about our seniors that are always on fixed income. And I keep that in the forefront of my mind when making spending decisions. We've cut spending by some creative ways. One is a reverse utilities auction. And we've saved hundreds of thousands of dollars in utilities by being a part of that. We have, we have our parking meters, which I know at times seem annoying, but they actually help keep our taxes stable because that money goes right into our general fund. And our police department is equipped with cutting-edge technology. I already spoke about our drainage plan. And we also are responsive. We've established council office hours. We meet, we will meet with any resident the first Wednesday of every month. And there will be two of us there. So if you were ever in need of anything. And we dredge Taconesi Lake. We have two phases of that with more to come. And Broadway is ready for the next step in development. And I just want to say that I love the people in this town. I wouldn't want to live, work, or be anywhere else. I respect its diversity. I enjoy meeting people from other countries right here, getting to know their culture and tasting. And attending live concerts in Long Branch are still a highlight of my life.
Ms. Bestelli, can you finish your sentence? I know you've timed two minutes and we're...
May I have just one more, please? But vote for the Schneider team. I thank you because our team brings a fresh perspective with younger crowd as well as experience.
Mr. Anastasio?
Thank you.
I know it's hard to cut me, you timed two minutes.
Yes, I'd like to thank everyone for coming out today. And thank everyone who participated here. And I'm a little disappointed that not everyone wanted to be part of this. I think it's very important that we all work together. And it's really my concern that we can bring as leaders a connection back to the whole community and have something where everything is kind of equalized across the board for all of us. Work for, you know, stricter development requirements. A lot of times you say that, well, we can't do this because that and the developers, so on and so forth. If you spent a little more time being stricter with these people before they started working on projects here, we would wind up with things that were a lot more beneficial for the community. I think that's what's been lacking here a little bit. I mean, something's kind of odd to me when you can build a battleship in 30 days and it's taken close to, what, 18 years to finish a project that's in phase three? That's a little silly, man. I mean, something's not right there, okay? You know, I want to listen to the people. We want to listen to the people of this city. The city is going to tell us what it needs. We don't tell the city what it wants. The city tells us what it wants. And before I lose my time here, I want to remind everyone that the deadline to register for your vote, voting is on the 17th of this month, okay? So don't wait till the 16th to hear about it. Till everyone is not registered, to go on out and get registered and have your voice and bring this community back together with us, all right? Thank you.
Thank you. And if you, just hold your applause for a minute because you took some of my minute that I was going to ask for. I wanted to remind you, well, certainly you know that May 8 is your vote here. But I have, in my possession, many voter registration forms. If anyone in your family is not registered, because I do assume that if you're here concerned about voting in this election, you are a registered voter. But maybe you have somebody else. I have many of these in mail by ballot, mail-in... uh, but maybe you have somebody else, I have many of these in mail by ballot, mail-in, uh, vote-by-ballot requests are here as well, so, uh, please feel free to come and, and get them, use them, and, um, thank the candidates. I know you're not all here, but to have so many candidates running for office means that you have a community that is very responsive and very caring, and, uh, I, I wish you all well. Thank you very much. And now... And I wanna thank Patty for reaching out to the League of Women Voters, I know we gave her a hard time, but she was persistent.
Thank you, everybody. And I guess I should've probably said this in the beginning, but I was a little bit too nervous. Um, the West End Watch Dogs, which is almost 3,000 strong now, started about three years ago, and it brought, it was brought about because we saw a need that the council, um, meetings were not well-attended, and the things that happened there are very important, um, for whatever reason, whether people feel uncomfortable with the atmosphere that the council members are like, uh, Tuesday, um, or for whatever reasons, uh, which that could also be improved. Um, we, we decided to start videotaping, audiotaping the council meetings, Facebook community group, and we are at every single council meeting, recording and bringing it live, as we were tonight as well. I wanna thank everybody that was here. Debates are not for losers. There was a statement made, and I won't, won't name who, but yesterday, Anna Sweeney, who was working very hard on the debate number two, which was just going to be for the mayors, um, and I went in person to try to get some answers on who was gonna be here tonight, and that was one of the sentences, as I quoted, "Debates are for losers, they're not." Thank you for being here.